And was back working with us again as temporary, I think.
As our homebound, one of our homebound instructors, yes.
Okay, so we have a moment of silence. Pam was passed away last week or week before last there. Okay, thank you. Board of Commitments, Dawn, you want to get those?
I've got them. Harden County Schools Board Team Commitments. I'm sorry, don't know why I showed that. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board Team commits to: Keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Okay, thank you. And recognitions tonight, we are going to skip because we didn't have school today, so... And also, we don't have anything on Focus on Academics, or we do?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Go for it. Mr. Greg Sutton.
Yes, sir. We were supposed to have some STLP groups here tonight presenting their projects. A lot of them qualified for the state, but with the fact of school cancellation, we asked them to be safe and not get out this afternoon. So we're going to present that next month, but we still have Kristen Swords here with us tonight. I don't know if y'all have met Kristen yet. Kristen's our new middle school director of curriculum instruction assessment. We pulled her in here. She was assistant principal of West Hardin Middle School, does a great job. She's developing great relationships with our middle schools and our staff. Greatly appreciate her. I don't think she's presented, but one of the tasks that we ask her to do is the Comprehensive District Improvement Plan, and that's very important. That kind of drives what we do from a school improvement perspective and goal setting and strategic decision making. We talk about closing that achievement gap. The work that we put on paper drives a lot of things that we do at the school. So I don't want to take her thunder here tonight. First time you got a chance to meet Ms. Kristen Swords. She's doing a great job for us. So Kristen, come on up. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening. Before I start, I just want to, in honor of School Board Recognition Month, thank you all for your service and dedication to our district. I know that the time that you put in is greatly appreciated. So I'm honored to be here to talk to you about our comprehensive improvement planning process. This is a process that starts in August, and we finish our improvement plan around December, but really, the process does not end then. It's an ongoing process where we continue to look at progress monitoring and data as it comes in, and we look at whether we're making growth towards our goals and where our success lies. And so our leaders through this process focus on priority needs that we establish. We look at our funding at both the district and the school level and whether that is meeting those needs. And we also ultimately look at closing achievement gaps for students. So with that, we have four phases in the improvement planning process, and you have a handout in your packet there that just kind of outlines each of those phases, and I'm going to touch on them briefly. The four phases each have diagnostics that help us dig into the data that's given to us and look at the needs that we have as a district and at each school level as well. Our CSIPS and CDIPs are developed as three-to-five-year plans, and this plan that was presented to you is no different from that. There's been a little bit of a struggle, though, or an interruption in state assessment data and accountability reporting, and so that affects the goals that we establish within our CDIP and that each school will establish for their CSIP. So KDE gave us some guidance this year, and they talked to us about our options for creating goals. And one of those options was to continue with the goals that we had established from our last reliable set of state assessment data, and that was the 18-19 school year. And so we looked at the goals that we had established during that timeframe. We looked at our percentages of students performing proficient and distinguished in certain areas, and we felt that it was best to continue with those goals because that was reliable data that we had at that point. And so our goals have remained the same from the 18-19 school year, but we've gone in and realigned our strategies and activities to fit what we are doing this school year, 21-22, to impact student growth. So Phase One is where I met with the principals. We talked about a timeline for this process, and then we all committed to the process. Phase Two is where we really got into our work, and we looked at a needs assessment in Phase Two. And with that, KDE this year came out with a key elements template, and that's also included in your packet of information. The key elements template helped us look at the six key core work processes. And these are processes that go on in districts and schools every day. There are things like designing instruction, delivering instruction, assessment, support that we provide for students, and then the culture within our district and within each school building. And so we met, we had a working session with school leaders, principals, assistant principals, district leaders, and we talked about these six key core work processes, and we came up with evidence to support how we are doing each of those work processes at the district level and at the school level. So the sheet that you have there are the things that we're doing at the district level to meet those work processes. And the goal behind that was that it would help us with our needs assessment because we would take that information and we would look for any gaps that may exist. And then our strategies and activities would align to meet those gaps. We also spent time in Phase Two talking about our strengths. And typically, that conversation would be guided around the state assessment data from the previous year and what strengths we were noticing. But because of that limited state assessment data and a lot of it being suppressed data that could not be released, we looked at strengths that were current and relevant to us at that time. So around the time that we were working on our needs assessment, it was September, and we had just finished our first round of iReady diagnostic testing, and we looked at the strengths that we were seeing in our students at that time. And we felt that that provided a current picture for us of where our students were. And so a lot of the strengths that you see mentioned in the needs assessment of the CSIP and CDIP are about the iReady results that we experienced. We also talked about the school environment. We felt that that was a strength. We were able to return to in-person instruction this year, both AMB groups, and we had incorporated lots of social-emotional lessons for our schools and for our students. And so we included that as a strength this year as well. And then that led the framework for Phase Three, which is where the majority of the work is done, and that is in the actual improvement plan. And so each school creates their improvement plan, and then us as a district will create the district improvement plan. And that is based around six indicators. Those indicators are proficiency... Sorry, proficiency, separate academic indicator, growth, achievement gap, transition or post-secondary readiness, and graduation rate. And that's determined based on the format of the state assessment. So we can anticipate that the CSIPS and CDIPs will probably look different next year as we're moving on to KSA, and KDE is deciding what the accountability will look like with that new assessment and what the reporting will look like. So we may not see these six indicators next year. But for this year, they wanted our goals to address those six indicators, and so that's what we carried forward with the 18-19 goals that we had created. And so we look at the strategies and initiatives that we're doing this year to address those six goals. And we've added things based on ESER funds and new initiatives that we have as a district to account for those gaps that we see. We've added intervention or support staff, enrichment teachers at the middle school level, the MyPath individualized instruction, and the diagnostic iReady report itself and the data that it gives us. So those are new strategies and activities that will help give us the data that we need to see if we're meeting those goals that we had established. And then that leads us to Phase Four, which is where we're currently at, and that is the ongoing progress monitoring, us continuing to look as a district and individual schools at where we're at on meeting those goals and what we're going to do to continue student growth. And so we're already in our second iReady diagnostic window. We're getting results from that right now, even though it's not complete until February 5th, but we're seeing great things. We're seeing schools that have upwards of 100% progress towards their annual typical growth for students. And so that's very promising to see that information. And as we finish the second diagnostic window, we will then take that information, come back and look at our CSIP and CDIP and talk about where we feel we are in meeting the goals that we have set forth. So as you can tell, it's a very collaborative process. We've worked a lot with the principals and assistant principals at the school level to develop this plan. It is definitely a tool that we want to use to guide teaching and learning so we can continue to see improvement in student growth and success. And I'm free and willing to answer any questions if you have anything specific about the CDIP, our goals, or the process itself.
Very good.
I just want to thank Kristen. I know that we have several principals here tonight, but she offered workshops that were at different times so our principals could come in and receive assistance. It's not an easy program. They call it E-Prove. That E does not stand for easy. It's a very difficult program, so I know they appreciate the help throughout that process, and thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I see why she's doing such a great job. Glad to have her on our Instructional Service Department team. I want somebody to correct me if I say something wrong here. I'm thinking from August to December. From August to December, I'm not sure we had a break in instruction this year, did we? I'm not sure we missed any days for weather-related or COVID. And when I show you the data next month, hopefully at the latest noon board meeting, the growth that we're seeing, as she mentioned, the iReady diagnostic from fall to winter, what our principals and teachers have been able to do with no break in instruction has been unbelievable. The amount of students that tested two grade levels below that have moved either one grade level or on-grade level has been tremendous, and it shows the impact that teachers have by having these students in the classroom. So thank you, Board of Education, Ms. Morgan, for allowing us, as Instructional Service Department, to be out there and the teachers, principals, to get the job done with the kids. I know we have a little rough patch here. That's weather, it is what it is, but thank you all for helping us make that happen. Can't wait to share the results after we're done on February the 5th, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I know it's been quite a challenge this year because a lot of people out with COVID, and I think the female principals way outnumber the men principals here tonight, don't they? But we don't even have one here, do we? But thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
Greg and John are standing in for them.
Oh, are they standing? No, I won't count those. That's not fair. But we do appreciate y'all coming out, and you know, at the board meetings, it's something that... You know, after 10, but we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's number six is recognition of visitors, and we have three people that signed up here to speak tonight, I believe. Richard Ceressi?
Ceressi.
Ceressi, okay. I wasn't sure where to go with the way you've got your name spelled there, so... Mr. Ceressi is from West Point Schools, and we've been talking with him a little bit about some... Sharing some school space with him, so here he is.
Yes, I'm Richard Ceressi. I'm representing the... I'm currently sitting on the West Point City Council and here representing them and the citizens of West Point to encourage you. We have made proposals to the Harden County Board of Education for the city of West Point to lease the existing and abandoned old West Point school building that's empty now. We tried to propose a lease that was equitable both to the city and to Harden County Board of Education as the building is now just sitting there using utilities and not being used for any particular purpose. The school, ever since the school's closed, the school was one of the anchors in our little town. And since it's closed, we, for one, we need another community center. We need someplace for citizens to gather. The school was particularly important because it truly was where the past met the future. There were a lot of people who went to school there that ended up teaching there or working there. It was just a great community space. Since it's been empty, it's kind of, it's taken away a lot of community space, a lot of community organizations that use it for meetings. So at this point, we have a lot of good uses for the building. Currently, we have no ADA accessible meeting space in West Point that would suffice. The big thing is, is with the recent tornadoes we have, we have no shelter space which the school could provide, tornado shelters for the citizens. We have a closed closet. We don't have any place to put it. All of our city facilities, our city hall and our museum are all below base flood, and moving those facilities to the school would get them not completely out of the flood lane, but much, much higher. So there's lots of... Lots of opportunities there. We hope to use the building for adult education, which we would share for Harden County schools. We intend to use it for tutoring the West Point students that are going to school here in Harden County and still need some help. And the list of other uses for it is just, goes on and on. We have many local residents that are willing to teach class. We have welding class. We have been able to teach the trades, homemaking, all those types of things. We have, currently, West Point is the conjunction of three of the historic trails, John Muir Trail, the Lewis and Clark, and Sam Pierman. All of those are becoming national trails. Lewis and Clark Trust has approached us, should we be awarded this building, that they would perhaps want to put an educational center in it about the Lewis and Clark Expedition. The Ohio River recreational trails, the ends in West Point, they've expressed interest. So we have a lot of opportunities to put educational facilities into a building that is currently being unused. While we lessen the burden of maintenance and occupying it and taking care of it, we take that away, some of that away from Harden County. The proposal was to go over three years where Harden County would contribute less and less to the utility bill primarily in short. And we hope at the end of three years that we can not only be using it successfully for education and for our city facilities and our museum, but that we can also use it in an entrepreneurial spirit to be able to incubate new businesses, to be able to help existing businesses expand, and use it as not only an educational center, but an economic development center. I could go on for days, but I'm sure you...
We appreciate you coming and telling the... Basically, you're telling the public here because our noon working session, you were there, and... But we... We're interested in leasing with you all. We have a few fine details that I told you we probably would make a decision tonight, and there's a few details in the contract that we want to get checked out and work into that we haven't got a total commitment on. It'll be agreeable with you all and us, but there's just a few things on some insurance and some things that we want to check on. But I am very much interested in working with you all and seeing if we can't get this facility in your all's best use and ours too.
Well, we really want a partnership with the Harden County Schools because I think that's the synergy we need. And again, as I said earlier, you know, we're way up in the northern part of the county, and some people don't even realize we're part of the county. So maybe if we have a facility there, particularly with the adult education or crafts education or something that would draw other people from around the county, maybe we can get over this little schism that we have of being the only part of Harden County that touches the Ohio River.
I think Paul would be a great person to be a lease or a tenant, however you'd want to put it. We need someone there to protect the building, for one thing, if you don't think it'd be vandalized.
Just cutting the grass is a big deal, so...
Graffiti, grass, yeah. So we are, I would say, definitely into the next board meeting, we'll have all these things worked out. We'll have John and Superintendent Morgan to work on getting everything finalized. We just got a few more details. We want to put in some things, and...
I understand.
Have possibly had some other people that have inquired about it, you know, but... It's one of those things we're working through.
All right, sir. I thank you so much for your time, and if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Katie Carey was next. Do you mind if Mr. Ash comes up? He's with West Point also, and we'll take care of them. Thank you.
I really have nothing to add other than what Councilman Ceressi said.
Okay.
Chairman Wise, and how you doing, Judge Bland? Haven't seen you in years. And... But, you know, any consideration that we can have. It is a fine facility that's going to... We all know if it sits there, it's going to go down. It is a fine facility right now, and we can use it. And if we can partner with y'all some way that's going to benefit you all and benefit us and not scrap us too much for cash, we would greatly appreciate it. And I hope you're not as hard to deal with as you was when I used to have to deal with you as the bar chief for fiscal.
I'm tough. You taught me everything I know. We do. We appreciate it.
Nice to see you all again. Just as soon as you can, if you don't make a decision on that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
All right. We'll work on it.
Thank you.
We'll come up with something good for both of us. Katie Carey wants to speak to us. Say her.
I just wanted to say, I don't know anything else. I just, I'm here tonight and I wanted to let you guys know that last week, you know, obviously, there's been lots of talk about going to NTI and the kids, you know, not sure what we're going to do. The numbers, you know, are very high. And I had a kid at Beta, and so the call to go to NTI, well, last week, you know, she was gone, got home at the weekend, and she just told me, she's like, "Well, Mom, we'll be out for six weeks." Like, you know, "We're going to be out. This is the way it's going." Just, I don't know if she was trying to encourage me or what the situation. But I encouraged her and I, you know, told her that, "No, absolutely not. It's not going to be six weeks, kiddo." Like, hang in there. We're going back to school." And so I just wanted to come up here and say, "Thank you." When the call came back that you guys were going to do in-person instruction, we were so excited and so happy. And I just, I know those are hard calls and hard decisions. I know you guys have criticisms on both sides. You have, hopefully, positive things on both sides of people who want it and people who don't. I just wanted to say, from a kid in eighth grade who told me we were solid six weeks out, just start making a new, you know, desk for her, that she was very excited. We were very excited, and I'm very appreciative when you guys make these hard calls. And I think, you know, data shows that the kids being in school in person with teachers is the best place for them. And you guys are making those decisions, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. We also, we know for a fact, in-school's the best place for them, and it's probably the safest place right now, but it has been tough. Our staff has worked hard. We've been short. We've had 40, 50 subs in here, and we don't have enough subs. I think central office personnel has gone and taught classes. They've done everything possible.
Yes, they have.
And it's just a tough situation. I think one day we had 255 out, I believe you sent me.
That was total classified, everyone.
Right, all employees and students.
Yes.
But that's a lot.
Well, that was employees, but you got to take transportation, all those. But I do want to just give a shout out. So Mike Lawson and I, at 5:45 in the morning, we start looking at lists of who's not there and which schools are short. And when we don't have teachers, we have teachers during their planning, going in and covering classes, but we also have people from central office. I text and say, "Can you show up here today?" And "What meetings can you cancel and go?" So the people here at central office, I think, have all been out to the schools to assist, and we greatly appreciate that. So our goal is definitely to keep the schools open. Sometimes it is not possible. The General Assembly, I believe, will pass to where we can close individual schools and that not count toward our 10 days. We have closed individual classrooms because of outbreak in that classroom, but tried not to close the entire school. So there are steps we are definitely taking, and it's, everybody's working together to make that happen, so. Mr. Sutton got to teach math one day. Mr. Stiff got to teach science one day. I got to teach seventh grade algebra one day. I don't know that teaching is the right term I should use, trying to recall what I learned 30 years ago, 40, 50 years ago, a long time ago. The kids did a great job of instructing me.
Good, good. But we do, we appreciate it, and I'm not going to use the governor's statement that we will get the rest of it. Y'all probably know. And I have seen so many shots on TV this year. I am the biggest wimp in this room taking a shot, and I am tired of seeing those shots on TV. So y'all help me if you can. Send a word to tell them to take that off the news. All right. Thank you all. Construction updates, we heard from the superintendent on the Central Harden job today on schedule. Weather has been a little bit of problem, but they're still on schedule, so we know that Central Harden students are totally disrupted from their normal drive-to-school and drop-off procedure, but they told us it would be about another year before we start to see any change on the parking lots, so we're looking forward to that next time. This time next year, maybe they'll start to have some parking places back. But it is a good-sized project. They're working on it. Have encountered a few of the unknown things that you run into when you do a renovation project, so they're on schedule as of right now, and that's our goal, to keep them on schedule. We don't want another project to turn out as long as East Harden did, so hopefully they'll get through it. John, you got anything else or anything you'd like to say on that?
Thank you, God.
All right, and that's... The architect wasn't there today, but not a whole lot. He could have told us, I don't think, anyway, except showed us a picture of some snow or water being on some footers out there. All right, we're down to consideration of the consent agenda. And it was... We've got the approval of our Comprehensive District Improvement Plan that we're approving tonight. And we're going to approve revised start time for GC Burkhead beginning in January the 24th. And they're going to add five minutes to their classroom instruction day. And I was, I learned a little out of it this morning, too. By getting the five minutes, that's equal to all of our other schools, and by the end of the year, we'll gain one more day of... Bank time, right.
Yes.
I have it right there. And so I don't think the five minutes will be too bad. The reason that school was behind five minutes was due to some student drop-off and buses being able to get in and out, and that had created where they started five minutes later. But we're going to bump them back up, so the ones that drop students off will have to get there five minutes earlier now. And we'll try to have all the schools to be on the same schedule. And we're approving John Harden deck of students to go to Alabama. All of these are private carriers for cost efficiency. Seniors at Central Harden have traveled to Ohio. Uh, seniors of Central Harden have traveled to Ohio in, uh, May. Approval of Bluegrass Middle School Eighth Grade History Club to go to Washington DC. And approval of the Central Harden JROTC to travel to Dayton, Ohio. And then we received the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasure, activity fund balance. Uh, we're approving the draft budget for twenty twenty-three. And, uh, as of right now, we've got about a two percent inflation, uh, plugged into that. So we don't know where that's going. It seems like every day something is higher and higher. So we're hoping that it won't exceed that two percent. And, uh, we're approving the twenty twenty-one audit report. Brian Woosley was there with us today. Everything looked good on it. And, uh, he had, had some little health issues. Normally we do this last part of the year, but it's got pushed back to January this year. So we are gonna approve it. We had a good audit report. And, uh, we're approving, uh, SFCC offer assistance for construction to Harden County schools and, uh, some statewide fundraisers. So anyone have anything they want to talk about more, pull out of that or take away? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, all right. We're down to action items. Election of a board chair. That sounds like a good job for somebody. A new person.
I see. Well, let me jump right in there then Charlie, because what I'd like to say is I want to move to elect, uh, Charlie Wise for the twenty twenty-two board chair.
I thought this was supposed to be a rotating job.
I never heard that.
Is that a motion being?
That was a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Dawn, I thought you were supposed to take this job.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
You got a plan for her?
I don't think she wants it for another year.
Any other nominations? I, I think I did a railroad.
I think you have to do a roll call then.
Do I have to do a roll call?
Yeah, it's a roll call.
This has to be a roll call, though. Maybe I'll get some help here. Voting. Mr. Segal?
Aye.
Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess I might as well vote aye, cause I'm out of it. Thank y'all a bunch. Uh, I'll, uh, try to keep peace here for another year. What was the next item? Y'all done causing a bit of a...
Vice Chair. That went so well, but I'd like to move to elect Don Johnson as, uh, for the twenty twenty-two board vice chair.
And I'll second that motion.
I'd like to continue the whole leadership here, so.
I think, uh, y'all are just trying to get a free ride here, you know?
As long as we can, Charlie.
All right. Any other nominations? Not? Voting. Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Segal?
Aye.
All right. Now we got to, uh, affirmation of the twenty twenty-two board secretary treasurer.
I move to affirm Superintendent Theresa Morgan as the twenty twenty-two board secretary and treasurer.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we also need the affirmation of a twenty twenty-two district finance corporation chair.
I'll, I'll move to affirm the Harden County School Board Chair, Charlie Wise, as the chair and superintendent Theresa Morgan as the secretary treasurer for the Harden County School District Finance Corporation.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Not? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You have a troublesome one.
Yeah. Meeting dates, times and locations. Uh...
Do we have a suggested slate of locations?
Um, Casey has, uh, selection of locations.
Yeah. Of course, the normal board meeting would be here except for the one that we have at the PAC in, uh, we're gonna have that next month.
In February.
February for, uh, so...
So it'll start in February?
It's been Wednesday for the last fifteen years, uh, or Thursday. We could do it on Wednesday. Just change things, could we? But, nah, you know, y'all, would you rather have a different date or does that work? I mean, it's fine for me. Or I'm pretty flexible on any of them.
I just soon leave it where it is.
I think what we're doing is working.
Yeah. We tried to work it another way last year and it was difficult and didn't work, so.
Well, we could do like some of them, some of the other organizations. They say, you know, if you have one like at ten o'clock in the morning or one o'clock in the afternoon or something, all the working people don't have a chance to come.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You know, I don't either. I, I think it should be where people has a chance to get here. But really, uh, uh, so someone wants to make a motion to leave it, uh, on Thursdays, here at the board office and in, uh, at the various schools that we've got listed somewhere.
How about so moved?
In a second.
Have a motion and a second, uh, I think. Most of you all are probably familiar that we, the noon meeting that we have has really been helpful. We get to go, or we go to a, most of the time, a different school. And it takes two years just for us to make that cycle to get to the schools. But a new board member that hadn't maybe been to all of them or any of them sometimes, uh, you know, they go to the school that's local in their community and they never get to see, uh, Creekside or, uh, one of the northern schools, depending on where you're from. So it really, it helps. And we get to tour the schools. We get to look at them, see what's going on. And, uh, uh, it just, I think it's been a good thing. Uh, if we've got discussion, we're not trying to get around anything that's on that agenda and, and... But sometimes we get into some numbers and things that would take, we were there about two and a half hours today.
Yes.
And we thought it would be a short one.
Yeah, we did. And, and that's, you know, that's two and a half hours of spent, uh, crunching some numbers. Uh, we get talking about budgets and things. We're, we're not hiding anything in that budget. It's out there for public view. But it gives us an opportunity to think about and, uh, question some of the parts of it. And it's just all kinds of little things like that that we talk about. So normally, uh, we do not take any action at the noon meetings uh, because that, we feel like it's our responsibility to be here. Uh, so people that is off from work are here of the night has the opportunity to hear us vote on it. And that's, uh, it's more a, uh, more of a tour than anything, but it's also a good working session for us. So it, it's worked well and I think we're gonna continue as long as we're able to make it there. Okay. You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business. Anyone have any new business they need to bring up? Superintendent's report?
So, uh, as Ms. Swords graciously, uh, mentioned earlier, this is School Board Appreciation Month. Um, and I will tell you, in Harden County, we are truly blessed to have our four, five board members. I had it at six earlier tonight. Uh, five board members with all different talents and experiences that they bring to the board. Uh, what you need to realize is that while you're seeing this meeting that lasts an hour maybe on TV or a half hour on TV, is that they spend a lot of their personal time, uh, talking with people, responding to emails, coming to meetings, uh, coming to construction meetings. So there is much more that happens behind the scenes. Uh, but they are heavily invested in what happens in this community. And when they make decisions, they want to make sure not only is it in the best interest of the students in our district and holding us accountable as a district to make decisions and take action that is in the best interest of students, but also for the community. Uh, they each recognize that they're elected and, uh, they take that very seriously. Uh, you know, what is best for the community of Harden County, Vine Grove, uh, Cecilia Valley, all those different places, or Cecilia, not Cecilia Valley, uh, all those different places. So when you see them, please give them a huge thank you for their time and dedication. Uh, often we don't have a lot of people running for the board, uh, because it is such a difficult position trying to make the right decision. And you have to come to an understanding at some point that not everyone is going to be happy with those decisions. But when you can fall back, it's all, always in the best interest of students. You can sleep well at night and each of these board members does that. So just on the behalf, we have a gift for you, um, Greg, and they're not your alls. Uh, Greg and John would bring those up. That would be great. Uh, not that. That's Greg. Sorry.
I, I brought that in there for y'all to snack on after lunch.
We want to thank Heartland for being our host today, uh, at our noon board meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, they had some students who made some cards. And so we just really appreciate, uh, you all and the talents that you bring to the table. So, thank you. That concludes my...
All right. Thank you all. And, and I would like to say, I'm, I'm the old one here. I've been here, uh, this is going on my sixteenth year. And, uh, everything that I have tried to do is the right thing. Uh, I know some of y'all probably feel like that we have been challenging. Uh, we've been invited to some of your all's meetings at here. And I have tried to stay in a neutral position on that. Uh, I want to do what's right. Uh, sometimes those decisions are hard. But in the end, whether you like it or I like it, I still like to be your all's friends. And I, I think it's important that we stay and work together. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue to try to do that. And, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna get it right. We've got as good a boards as, as I have ever dealt with. I've sat on the hospital board. I've been on some pretty important boards. And this group is good. We're good. So we're gonna continue to try to make things right for y'all next year. And you help us and we'll even make them better. Thank you all. All right. Executive session. We don't need an executive session tonight.
Good. Don't feel retarded at the moment.
All right. So, uh, I guess, uh, February the seventeenth is gonna be the next, uh, board meeting. And, uh, all we need is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.